Meeting schedule for 2015. First and third Monday of every month coinciding with the city council meeting.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there any other business to come before the agency before I entertain a motion to go into executive session? If not, I entertain a motion to go into executive session. Dealing with 28 Ingersoll Avenue and negotiations.
I was going to suggest that we recess the meeting and then go into executive session when we finish the council.
Oh dear, that'll skew up my timing for the average scheduled meeting.
Oh, it'll be hours long!
It's probably got it on there a minute.
Moved by Council President King, is there a second to recess? Secondly, Councilmember Parrazo, all in favor?
Aye.
The agency stands in recess until later this evening.
You're only as good as your last meeting.
Exactly.
Okay. Why can't I not find my page one here? Call to order finance committee. Page one, please Chuck. I had one, but I don't know. Page one. Oh, I got it. Okay, call to order finance committee, 2015 budget reallocation regarding the union agreements, Mr. Ferrari.
President, Council Mayor, we are requesting a resolution for a budget, a budget reallocation for the 2015 salary budgets in reference to settlement of the contracts of the CSA Local 1000 and the trades union. As you recall, during the 2015 budget process, we anticipated a settlement. We were not, you know, we did set aside some funds for it, but it wasn't a hundred percent correct, and we're looking to trans, allocate the rest of the money through the contingency plan and insurance lines that we have.
If everyone just done also so that when you do future budgets, the lines will be amended so that when you do comparisons, it'll reflect the pay raises and we'll be comparing apples to apples as opposed to lines that would be artificially slightly lower.
Questions or comments? Anyone?
Let me move this.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any other business to come before the finance committee? Motion to adjourn, please.
So hold it a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And about city development planning to order? The first side is just a reminder that we have two ceremonial resolutions from two weeks, three weeks, three weeks ago, a week ago, whatever it was. Widows and the spelling bee and the union hockey.
Who else?
The second one is we have renewed the African American History Month ceremonial resolution.
Yeah, there was a historical fact, and it was incorrect, so we redid it so that it reflected correctly.
So we'd just like to move it again. So I want to take a motion to approve that, against Ferrari, second to Mr. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
And another ceremonial were bridges to youth.
Right, there was some young people that participated in a conference that the Schenectady Foundation put on, working with Ruby Payne. I don't know if most of you have heard of the work that she does regarding bridges out of poverty. So these youth participated in a panel for youth, a call to action, so just wanted to recognize them for participating in that way. It was a ritual, the school districts just thought that they had really stepped up to the plate and wanted to be able to have them recognized.
Okay. I think some of the motions, if you move that.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and item number four, we called for a public hearing on the changes in state and brandy line. Does anybody have any other questions related to that? We don't need to take action on that. And items five and six will be in executive session, so I'll take a motion to recess city development planning, as far as everybody in Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll call to order government operations. First thing on the list is the housing standard review board. I sent you all an email, or Chuck did, this afternoon midday with regard to suggestions from corporation counsel. Does anyone need a copy of that email?
We don't.
Okay. So if you haven't had a chance to review that, maybe just take a minute to review. As the board stands right now, several of the criteria in which it would be charged with are illegal, so we do have to massage the makeup of the board, the tasks of the board. So I'll give you a minute to look at that. Mr. Moutteran?
Can I just add something? Since we have Mr. Schilling here, can he just give us a little insight of this, of the board working with his department, or him working with the board?
Sure. Mr. Schilling, do you have anything you'd like to share with us? You want to come up to the center of the table, so your handsome face can be on TV?
I guess nothing really to add except the questions. You know, it's something I have no objection to. Our department doesn't, we have, everything that we have, I think, is completely documented and dependable, so if you have any questions regarding it. One concern we may have, and I spoke about this with Carl, is that we don't interrupt the prosecution's timing of our process. You know, it's something we'd be concerned about, is that, you know, notices and corrections and remedies are normally set forth in the interest of public safety, the condition of a building, and so on. And, you know, we'd like those things to continue to move forward. So if there's a simultaneous process, or something that Carl may be able to maybe inject himself into a little bit in the process of this, I'm not really familiar with what this is. I've never seen it in action. I have no familiarity with it, so I can't really speak to experience with it. But what I can say is, you know, we have no objection to this, it's something that people feel as though they need to appeal to an action that we've taken, and certainly like to hear what that is, we'd like to be able to have the opportunity to respond to that, and explain the position that we've taken, and what we've done, and why. But our interest would be is that, and foremost, is really not to delay, you know, the solution processes, notices and appearance tickets, and then finally resolve remedy to the condition that we've cited.
I think the first suggestion by Mr. Falatiko is somewhat similar to the police civilian review board, maybe a little less, you know, but almost to act as a liaison between the landlords and the codes department. Ms. Porterfield? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had your hand up. Do you want to make something up?
No, I'm waiting for you to finish.
I'm finished.
Okay. So in terms of this board, the mayor, you would appoint people? And do, could we suggest people to for the board, or is that, would you be?
I don't even know what to suggest, and hopefully we're partners in the whole thing.
And I do have a question also. When, in terms of the, how the process works, is there some place in writing that people can get from your department that says, you talked about the litigation and the process, you want to make sure, you know, it doesn't get bogged down by this particular board? Is there some place if someone's going through a process because of a code violation, that they have something in writing from your department that lets them know exactly how the procedure works? Because that's been a question that's been raised.
Well, a notice violation is a written notice, and on it clearly defines the code violation as such the actual code chapter of what the violation is. And following that would be a prescriptive measure as to what, you know, there's a remedy to this, and it would be repair, replace, whatever, and a prescription also would include a time frame. So those things being said, you know, beyond that, if the person with a notice communicates with us, shows us the remedy is in place, or at least in motion forward, and is communicating, we're very gracious about saying, okay, well, we see we're eighty-five percent in place, and we're going to continue to extend and work with that person. If it moves to a, an appearance ticket because the remedy was not put in place, or there was no motion to remedy, then Carl could probably speak to the legal end of that, and we'd probably refer them to the law department at that point. I'm fairly aware of what that process is, but I can't speak in detail to it.
And follow up, because it's going to come up, I know, with this board, because it's already come up and this board isn't in place. In terms of the uniformity of the violations, depend, you know, from different staff members, is there's, because, is there some guideline that a person who might be affected by this would have, so that, because what I've been told is that sometimes there's no uniformity, that this person may violate somebody for something that somebody else has previously passed?
That I have no knowledge of. I mean, the code and our inspection items are written, they're black and white. Is this in place? Is this in good condition? Is this, you know, those are fairly black and white. With respect to our enforcement, I would liken it to, say, the police department, not every single person that speeds gets a ticket. But the person that gets a speeding ticket feels singled out. You know, we have twenty-two thousand structures, we've got nine officers in the field, we're not going to catch. So we do get complaints, and we try to, we try to respond to that, saying, well, I was cited, but he wasn't. Again, virtually impossible for us to, you know, physically blanket and say that every single person should be appealing pain or a broken window. We respond to issues on a daily basis based on complaints and communications that come in. They become that focus for that moment, because we want to respond to those things, and enough people know that we are. We have daily agendas based on scheduled activities that, you know, introduce us to maybe adjacent property. But as far as uniformity, you know, the code is black and white. We have a range of officers with a range of experience, I can tell you that, you know. This is a very difficult department to find experienced people in. You know, we definitely have to pick people who are new people, new hires, who have a good background in construction, or have a good, you know, building knowledge background. But very few people come with code enforcement experience. There's nowhere else to get it. It's not like if you're a chef and want to move from restaurant to restaurant, you have a resume saying where you cook. Very few people come to us, who've applied for the newer positions we've filled in the past couple of years, saying, I have code experience. You know, you just, there's no other way, there's no other place to get it, except you know, in the spa, you're working for a code office, or code building company. So that being said, you know, we have officers with various levels of experience, some may be more astute to certain details than others. That's a, that's a growing pain that we're going to have as we continue to add people, and people retire, and that moves through. So some might cite, you know, this person did this, and this person did that. You know, that person may have had a greater knowledge of a certain area arena, and been more astute to a certain thing, as that other person may not have quite that experience. I think is the best way to answer that.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? So I guess along with Mr. Falatiko, what we're proposing that the board serve as is that liaison option number one there, which the board hears the appeals of the decisions of the building inspector, and then can receive comments from the public, both landlords, tenants, on code enforcement, and then kind of act as the liaison to find common ground, almost like a mediation service, more or less, you know? And then ultimately make recommendations about how code enforcement might work more closely or more effectively with landlords and tenants. Does anyone propose anything different from that going forward?
Just a clarification, on section E, Carl, if you can just, office for that, in terms of, to understand it?
Well, I think this is all going away. Yeah.
Oh, so we're going to get something different then?
Yeah, that's, the whole point of this was, a lot of this is illegal, and we can't work with it.
Yeah, that's the same thing.
Right. So all this, other than the, well, we will come back with, we're not ready to vote on this.
Oh.
We would come back with a proposed, the proposed changes. Yep. Well, this is kind of a, an information gathering session, right? What would you like to see the board do? So, yeah, so E would not, would be a move point, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
What other points will be up?
All of them. Pretty much. We're redoing, we're remaking the board, because they can't legally comment on egress, or they can't have, you know, the ability to just walk into any structure at any time. I mean, really, Mr. Falatiko would be writing this so that the board would be fielding concerns from tenants and landlords about code enforcement decisions, and acting as liaison to how they can most effectively.
Make a recommendation.
Yes, and make recommendations, yes. So where I see, like, obviously, the board can consist still of five members, the terms of office, the compensation, all of that can stay the same. One of the things I would like to see changed in the membership is that at least one of the board members is a multi-unit property owner. I think that adds balance to the board. It's, you know, something where the person who was fielding the concern, that person could, you know, offer their perspective as a, as a, you know, landlord of multi-units. I just think that's a good balance to the board. I don't know if we want to keep it at five members, I think that's wise, because getting a quorum when you start to make the boards bigger is, is a problem. But those, it's more of those kinds of things that we're, anybody opposed to changing the wordings that one, one member is a multi-unit? Or no?
No.
Anything else you'd like to see added, or, I mean, we can revisit this again in two weeks, and we can tweak it some more. Mr. Falatiko suggested that we might have a public hearing, which I think would be a good thing. So if everybody's in agreement with that, we can do a call for a public hearing now? Or, well, no, we have to bring forth the changes first.
That would be up to the council. If you wanted, we could, you call for a public hearing next Monday, if you wanted to vote for a resolution out of committee for that, and then the changes would be prepared based on what you discussed today in advance of that public hearing, usually the Wednesday before. If you wanted to see the exact changes before you call for the public hearings, I could have posted in two weeks.
I think it's wise to see the exact changes, before we call for the public hearing, and then people can kind of marinate and think about it, and show their concerns, you know, in public hearing. So we'll draft the first version, and bring it forward in two weeks. Everybody is amenable to that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Mr. Falatiko, you're all set with what you need?
Yes.
From us? Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Just can't keep a hold of my page one. Okay, next on the agenda is a discussion regarding abandoned and extended parking on the city streets. We talked about this, we've talked about this in several committee meetings, so just to give a little bit of history, our parking as it stands now, it has extensive provision for cars that are inoperable, snowed in, you know, leaking fluid, broken windshield, all of that, which is good, comprehensive. It works within the police department for their enforcement and removal of cars, and all of that is great, but what we're looking at, and what we've been discussing, is chapter 248, which states that a motor vehicle shall be deemed to be abandoned if it's left unattended for more than forty-eight hours after parking such vehicle. Legally, it becomes illegal and can be towed away. So if you park on the street in your neighborhood legally, and go on vacation, and your neighbor complains, they can tow away your car, which I've had actually calls from people that that's happened to, saying, you know, could, would you please revisit this? I did a bunch of research online for Albany, and Troy, and Amsterdam, and no one addresses legal parking, and Mr. Moutteran has also brought some examples to us this evening that he passed out. Thank you for taking the time to do that research, Mr. Moutteran. But still, none of these talk about legal parking.
That's true, yeah.
So, which, and I'm glad we have something within our law that talks about legally parked cars, because I think it is important if you have a car, you know, that, you know, somebody's kind of walked away from, but the registration is okay, and it's not leaking fluids, and there's nothing wrong with it, but it's just sitting in front of your house, or maybe, you know, making ingress and egress to your driveway difficult, or whatever. At least we have something that allows people to protect themselves. But I think as it stands now, for our citizens that aren't able to park on the street, forty-eight hours is, is a bit of a short time. So I'm bringing it back to discussion on whether, you know, I think most of us are in agreement that we want to change it, but how are we going to change it? So I'm opening it up for comments and questions. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Do you have specific problems where instances have created inconvenience, or it's been disappplied in your interpretation?
Well, the whole thing came about actually because it wasn't being applied, because we had someone who complained about a car that had been parked in the same place for a very long time, and she was told through the way the law was being interpreted that nothing could be done about it, that the car had to be leaking fluid or bad, which was just an error, right? Just an error. So as we had that conversation, we realized that the forty-eight hour rule was in effect. And I personally haven't had any issue, but I have had calls, and I believe Ms. Porterfield has some, am I speaking correctly, has some feedback also?
It's different than this, though.
Okay.
It's under this law, but it's a different situation.
Oh, okay. So we're just bringing it about, because really, you know, as the law states, if you're on vacation and you have a vindictive neighbor, your car can be towed away at your cost. And I just think that's not the best thing to have in the books either.
I think that the practical side of it is, we don't mark a car until it's exceeded the forty-eight hours. So it's there two days, three days, four days before it gets marked, and it's given another two days before it gets towed. And again, my understanding is we actually haven't towed a lot of these. And then if somebody has a hardship case, or some unique set of circumstances, if they call the police department, they'll issue an overlay, so that the police department's aware of what the background is, and they would act accordingly to, again, so if it's hindering the driveway, or something else, we want it moved. But again, if somebody's away on vacation, or there's an unusual set of circumstances, that we would deal with that, and then the existing policy or procedures that exist within the police department.
Again, I think that's great in a perfect scenario, but I think that this opens up the citizens of the city into a little bit of a vulnerable position, if somebody just doesn't let their car park there, you know? So, you know, I think forty-eight hours is unreasonable for a legally parked car, but...
I'll tell you that there's no car that's towed.
Within forty-eight hours, I understand. And really, the police aren't going around marking tires and paying attention to cars. It's more of a reporting situation, definitely. Absolutely. Comments, questions? Yes, Mr. Riggi?
I guess mine is, it kind of mirrors the mayor's. Really, how can, how would anybody know that somebody's on vacation, the car's there for a week? So how would that, how can you, that be known? Or if a car's inoperable or not, unless it's visually, visibly, you know, the car could have broke down, it doesn't run, how would a police officer know that? So that's why the car isn't moved. So there's some ways, you know, visually, we could see if it's inoperable, if a tire's hanging off, or something like that, which I've seen that happen, and things like that. But as a matter of fact, I had a call today, a truck was parked the opposite of lady's driveway for weeks, she couldn't get out of there, so I had to send, you know, the road patrol there, and they tagged it, and the car, what, the truck was moved. It wasn't, the owner, who was there, obviously knew, saw a tag, so he moved it into the driveway. So it becomes a problem for, especially in this weather, it's a problem for people, you know, moving around the streets. Streets are hard to navigate now, with cars parked, now it becomes tougher. So, I mean, I kind of, like I say, I agree with the mayor that no car gets towed within forty-eight hours, because it's going to be probably four days anyhow, it's going to be double that, because after forty-eight hours, then they can chop the tire, and then they have to wait. And it's generally when there's a complaint that it happens. I don't think police officers go around looking for cars that sit there, so it's when there's a complaint, that somebody's hogging a space, for whatever reason. And as we know, off-street parking's a premium, so that becomes another obstacle. That's my thoughts on it.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Ferrari?
You know, I think we're really just looking just for a little bit of leeway, you know, where we do have the set number, and even though it's not truly being enforced, I think that if we work with it, I think that's, that's the main point here, that we could have something set in stone, even though it is going to take four days, you know, before something happens, at least, you know, we have just a little bit more time in regards to someone who, you know, is just parked for forty-eight hours. So I think that's really what we're looking for, is just that, that time lapse. I think that should be something to consider.
I would hate to have it perceived that I'm hogging a space when I'm on vacation, you know? Yes, Ms. Mayor?
And I guess my point is, is there any harm in changing it to a week or two weeks? I know Mr. Moutteran and I had a conversation, and we felt two weeks is maybe too long. But, so even just to change it to seven days, something like that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, by the time the process gets rolling, and whatever, if you look at seven days, you know, it's going to be there for a little while before it gets tagged, or it takes maybe...
But remember again, if you set it timed seven days, or you set it in two weeks, it's going to sit there two weeks, then we're going to tag it, mark it after that, and so it's going to be another two weeks on top of that, so it would sit there a month.
Well, if it were seven days, then somebody could...
An excessive two weeks.
Right.
Yes. To talk from public safety, I mean, cleaning crew on the street, cleaning the streets on the summer, and then, you know, snow removal, you have a car parking there on that side, and I'm moving for two weeks. It's a public...
Right, they still tow.
They tow that.
I want to be really clear about that. If the car is snowbound, they will tow it away. So I really think that that's an important thing, that's not something we're discussing, because I don't want people to be concerned about that. If the car is snowbound, they will tow it away, so that they can properly clean the street.
I don't, I'm not sure that always happens, though. I'm sure that doesn't always happen, let me say it like that.
Legally, we can do it, though.
Yeah, legally, we can, but it doesn't really always happen, you just kind of scoot around the car, and the car actually gets more snowbound, because they're pushing a little snow on top of it as they pass it. So, so what I'm hearing is that two weeks is too long, but we need something longer than forty-eight hours?
I think that's what you're hearing now.
What does that number become? When we start adding in the fact that you already, already tag it, now that's going to double, whatever the time is.
Maybe we consider five days.
Again, how is this going to be enforced? How in the police department, how are we going to do this?
Same way as it is now. It's through a complaint system. The police are not going to use their time to go around and say, wow, like day one, day two, day three. But it gives the homeowner a way to have a car removed that's not illegal in any way, if that is the case. At least it gives them an option to report the car, and then follow up, you know, with the police.
And we're not talking about a car that's parked in front of someone's driveway, you know, for days now.
Right.
You know, we're just looking...
A legally parked car. Yes, Ms. Riggi?
In that case, like the one that, there was a problem today, the vehicle's legally parked, but it was obstructing the person from getting in and out of their driveway. So if we go with longer, then that person's going to have to wait longer before they can get relief from something like that. So there's a lot of issues with this. It isn't all cut and dry as it seems. So I, all I can go is, what I just had a problem with today, was exactly that. So if we'd lengthen it, that person would have to wait longer before they can get out of their driveway, because of the snowbanks. I mean, snow makes all different issues with parking, and with getting in and out of your driveway. With her, I assume, when it's, she has snowbanks on both sides, you can't cut your wheel enough when you're getting in and out of your driveway, so with something parked exactly across from her driveway, makes it very difficult. So if we're going to lengthen that, and the person would be legal, then the police can't do anything legally with that vehicle, like they did today. Just think, that's where the harm would come, because, you know, Ms. King asked where the harm could be, that's where the harm could be, something like that.
Like you're stuck there for, you know, several days?
Right. I would assume that we could make a provision about egress and ingress from the driveway?
We could make a provision for pretty much anything that you'd like to put in.
Okay. So that's an option, we can make a provision, bar no hardship to surrounding properties, or, you know?
And if we're talking about it, you know, extending it, we, we could also put a provision that, right now since forty-eight hours, if we're talking, if we're talking about five days, we, doesn't mean that we have to double it, that it be then ten days, we couldn't We couldn't be saying after five days and they only have 48 hours to move it, then that becomes a week as opposed to saying 10 days.
Right.
We wrote the legislation...
But we have to...
Wait, we would have to make sure it's there five days.
Record it, wait the five days so that it's been verified by the department personnel and then take whatever action the council grants the authority. So, the neighbor, somebody...
Or we could just take it out of here altogether and be like all the other municipalities around us and...
And 48 hours.
And say that, you know, if a car is parked for more than 48 hours and causing hardship, you know, maybe we take away the fact that it suddenly becomes illegal after 48 hours and say a car parked legally causing hardship to surrounding property owners or however you would phrase it can be removed if reported or something along those lines. So, that we're taking the, because right now as it stands, any car legally parked for 48 hours can be towed away, which I have an issue with. But we could say any car, you know, causing hardship or, you know, it could then be...
But let's keep in mind, police are not just going to comment.
Limiting egress or ingress or whatever.
They're going to try to contact whoever the vehicle's registered to, knock on your door and ask you, Mr. Kozier, why is your car being parked here on four blocks away? I mean, they're not just going to come around and tow cars like we're assuming here.
Except if you're on vacation, which I've had several calls that that happened because they couldn't be reached and they came home and their car was towed away. That kind of residents specifically.
But again, if people call the police department, we'll grant an overlook. And we did talk about that, the overlook. I mean, call the police department, you know, grant an overlook rather than changing it, I mean, enforce the 48 hours that we have right now.
But now, an overlook is subjective. You know, an overlook is whether the police deem it reasonable cost to provide an overlook.
But the police are going to tell them, yes, we will do that, or no, we won't. So, then somebody can then approach it differently in terms of where they're going to park their car.
Okay, so, let me ask you a question. If, if I'm on vacation and my car gets towed away, does the overlook erase any costs associated with that?
The overlook would have been called in before you went away and the car would never have been towed originally. That's what the overlook is, that they will overlook a situation that may be a technical violation.
So, then our sys, so then our citizens have to know that they can actually call the police department and ask for an overlook, which I think is, again, not really protecting the average person out there, you know? I mean, a person who doesn't know how to navigate the system is not going to know that they can call for an overlook because they're going on vacation and their car is legally parked on a street because they may not even know the law exists in the first place. So, I still would like to see some sort of provision that if the vehicle is deemed, you know, able to be towed...
Do we have any facts and figures, how many cars were towed?
Police officers didn't know that that was a law when they came in.
I mean, I, I never had any calls that somebody complained. I'm sure you did.
All right.
Do we have any facts and figures, how many cars were pulled when people were on vacation?
No, I do not. No, I do not. But however, if I could have everybody take a turn, I know there's people that are in support of making a change, I'd like to hear from them as to what you would like to see changed or maybe once we've discussed it, you don't want to see a change so that we can move forward on either changing it or not.
Well, I think we should take into consideration what everyone has to say in terms of, you know, what makes sense, the amount of time and what doesn't, and, and see if we can come to, and if it makes sense, I mean, how we can word it in such a way that you have concerns about the, someone not knowing about the overlook. I never knew about this law, though. But having a driveway, it didn't really, it didn't really apply to me. So, I, I think we have to try to figure out a way that it, that it works for everybody. If two weeks is too long and 48 hours is too short, what really makes sense in terms of the length of time that it doesn't affect negatively the homeowner or, or the neighborhood? Mr. Moutivarian brought the point about cars when there's a garage. If you're going to address that point, I'll let you.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
That people own garages and so they park cars around in the neighborhood. I'd never thought of this, and, and, but I know that it's true because I've taken my car to a garage and you'll tell me it's on the street around the corner. And so, the concern was in that instance, how long do we say? Because if you've left your car, you're taken to the garage, you don't pick it up for another week or whatever, that car can legally stay parked there for up to two weeks at this point if we go to two weeks. So, that was one of the concerns that, that he brought up. So, I think we, we have to take into consideration all those things, so.
I'm just touching a little bit on that. I mean, do you have this workshop using the streets to park that the cars are on right now?
Yeah.
Give them two more weeks, two meets, which is going to be three weeks, it's going to be four weeks, and they're going to be legally using the street as they're parking on. So, we just have to factor in that also.
Yep.
So, I think we have to come up with a timeframe that, that just makes sense.
Okay. Mr. Ferrari, did you have anything specific that...
I think if we just define C better in the sense that, you know, for those who have not notified for an overlook, for those that have not contacted the proper authorities, then this time limit, whether we leave it at the 48 hours, just to put that, you know, there is an option for you to get this overlooked by contacting the, the correct authorities. So, if we can define it a little bit better, then I can see where that would work. But as far as, you know, the time limit, if we can come up with a reasonable number between all of us, then that would work for me also.
Okay. Ms. King, anything to add?
I'm kind of still coming back to the downside of changing it slightly or your idea of taking it out. I'm looking to see, is there a downside to that? Is that diminishing police authority to be able to tow a car? We don't have that in there.
There are situations that will come up that will just be, if I have a better term, bizarre fact pattern, where the police will want the car towed. And so, if you're going to change that, I'd ask at this point, without talking to the police chief, that the police chief be given the discretion where, you know, there's certain circumstances where they attempt to notify the owner, they do a reasonable outreach to locate the owner and have the vehicle moved, but otherwise, the, the authority would rest with the chief to have the vehicle towed.
Anybody else want to add anything?
Just one more provision as far as the criteria. What we discussed as far as if it's causing, you know, hardship whether it be via ingress or egress, then we can give a certain time limit for that rather than, you know, the number may or may not change.
But if it's blocking the driveway or hindering it...
It's a legal period.
We will take an affirmative action that's going to happen really immediately.
Yes, right.
Tends to be dispatched as a priority three. It's the lowest call in the queue, but it's going to be handled on the shift that is received.
Well, I guess where that's coming from is the fact that, oh, first of all, I have a question. Is an overlook a technical term or is that, I mean, is there something that's, that's considered an overlook or are you just saying that it's...
No, that's in terms used within the department. So, they're asking for some discretion.
Right.
The call, as Mr. Iggy points out, a car's broken down, they aren't going to be able to get a tow truck there until tomorrow for whatever reason. So, the police will let it sit there for 24 hours or some other factor is applied. We have, people will have house parties, there might be funerals or other things, so that there would be actual, no parking or parking that's posted in a different way and they'll ask for an overlook. So, it's a little bit of discretion. It's what I hope manifests itself in common sense application of the law over existing situations. And even people who go on vacation will call the department, tell the department that they're going on vacation and the department will put the house on for extra attention so that they'll know that somebody isn't going to be there for a week, two weeks, and the police department will have a car, drive by, look at it, get out of the car, walk around the house, and again, make sure that it's secure and is, everything's proper.
So, round and round we go. Because really, I mean, what, what we're talking about is, you know, the balance between making sure people don't take advantage of this situation and the people who can potentially be victimized by the situation, right? So, and I still see that hanging in the balance here. So, if Mr. Falutico would agree, maybe we'll work on a couple of scenarios for C and bring them back in two weeks with my, you know, you telling me what can legally be, you know, written in and what can't.
But I've just asked the council to make some decision in terms of the direction that you want. You want it to 48 hours, you want it to 72 hours?
Right. And we don't, obviously, we can't, because there are so many factors involved, we're having a hard time with that.
Then I would just ask the council come up with some consensus, then I'll have the staff prepare the legislation to...
Right, that's what I'm talking about. But I have to work with Mr. Falutico to know whether what we're proposing is legal or not. That's all. I'm not asking him to come up with the ideas, but to help us know whether it's legal to propose or not. So, I guess we'll just bring it back up in two weeks again.
So, you know, there was a time when there was no overnight parking in the city of Schenectady.
Really?
There was a big sign there. No overnight parking.
That's interesting.
So, it did change.
You go streets that didn't have driveways, huh?
Yeah, there was a sign when you entered Schenectady, no overnight parking, you couldn't park for 24 hours. So, that was it. So, it did loosen up a bit since then.
That had cut down on people wanting to buy houses.
And that's where everybody had gone calling, too.
So, are we going to try to come up with a timeframe now or just among us or not?
I was just going to try to work on something and bring it back. We, if you want to keep banging it out, we can keep banging it out.
Well, I'm not the only voice at the table, so I...
I mean, that's a good point that Mr. May brought there. Why don't we invite the chief to, you know, to the table and ask him his opinion in terms of, you know, his recommendation, what he thinks that, you know...
For public knowledge, we had parking enforcement come in and they, you know, we discussed it with them and they said they would abide by, you know, what we, I said, what, what creates hardship for them, right? And they said that, you know, the longer it goes, the harder it is with marking wise and we would have to default to a complaint situation. So, you lodge a complaint and then you would need to follow up on the complaint for that effect.
We've got together from the chief because, I mean, we didn't get the full information from them. They were not prepared fully to answer some of the questions that we asked.
You know, I don't want to, like, I don't really want to say that the parking enforcement people weren't fully prepared because I think they did a great job at giving us the information. But we can certainly, I, you know, ask the chief if he sees any issue with this. Any other input on this for now? Ms. Porterfield?
Well, actually, it's under the same article, so there is one thing that I'd like to, to bring up. Under D, it says that a car is considered abandoned, left unattended for more than 96 hours on the property of another, is left without permission of the owner. I received a call that the information was, was, did not, the call didn't come directly to me. Someone else called me that they had a neighbor who, someone else parked in their driveway without their permission. And when they called, we're, we're told that the police could not come and tow off of private property even though it was the owner of the private property that was calling. So, if that is in fact correct, can we make some change in D so that this 96 hours seems a long time? I would hate for somebody to park in my driveway and for, be able to park there for 96 hours and me not be able to do anything. I mean, my understanding is they were told that they could have a tow truck come and have it towed at their expense and then when the person came to pick up their car, they would have to pay it back and then the person would get their money back. So, I, I, again, like I said, I think 96 hours to be able to park on somebody else's property without their permission is, it's a pretty lengthy time. It's longer than you could park on a city street legally.
That's true. Maybe that's the answer to the problem. Maybe I'll just tell people they should park in somebody else's driveway.
So, I think we should also discuss that when we have the chief come so we can maybe take a look at that particular piece of the legislation.
Okay. We'll put this on for two weeks and we'll have, we'll invite the chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And last, reschedule council meeting, May 27, 2015. Hi, Mr. Putman, but I assume it's Mr. Yu, Mr. Yu. Mr. Thorn. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Putman, speak up there.
So, just real quickly, the assessment department has the agreements day coming up on Tuesday, May 26, which is currently our scheduled city council meeting. That's also the week of Memorial Day. So, that Monday is a holiday, that Tuesday is now set aside for the assessment department to host the agreements day. And so, the request was to move the city council meeting to that Wednesday, the 27th, which is the same thing we did last year.
Does we all check our calendars? Any discussion, question about moving it to Wednesday, May 27? Everybody's good with that?
Yep.
Great. Do we need to have a motion or anything? It's just a clerical thing, right? Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Putman. Anything else to come before government operations this evening? Ask for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All who are in favor?
Aye.
Autorer claims, entertain multiple in second session.
So, more?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Should we finish our...
We're going to take a second.
Thank you.
I got your email.
Did you?
Yes.